Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this Lacey City Council meeting to order on October 6th, 2022. If you can, please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have an agenda in front of us. Is there any changes? Now, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries unanimously. We have an agenda and approved consent agenda items. First up on our approved agenda is public comment. We have several people who have signed up for, who pre-registered via Zoom. And let's, let's see if we can start with them first. And first up, shows we have Megan Hall. Can Megan hopefully come online and introduce herself and keep her comments about three minutes? Do we see Megan?
Just one moment, Mayor. We're getting her online.
Great.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council and Kelly behind the scenes. My name is Megan Hall. I am here to comment on the city of Lacey's Chick-fil-A sponsorship for both the recent Children's Day event and for numerous other summer children's events this year. I have worked in Lacey for 21 years and am the Union President of AFSMI Local 3758 Timberland Regional Library. I am here tonight representing only my personal views and feelings and not that of my employer or the union. I am also representing on behalf of the personal views and feelings of Lacey Local 3758 workers, Carrie Martin, Reyna Seedor, Naomi Bell, Sarah Glazer, and Diane Frelick. Chick-fil-A has a long and tragic history of advocating against equal rights for LGBTQ people through their charitable donations and statements made by their CEO and founder. The name Chick-fil-A is well-known to many in the LGBTQ community as a name synonymous with corporations who oppose equal rights for LGBTQ people. In 2019, the company pledged to stop donating to organizations opposing gay rights, but The Daily Beast reported as recently as last year, "The founder helped fund efforts to derail the Equality Act, a federal-level effort to protect LGBTQ individuals from discrimination." It was upsetting to have to table at and attend Lacey events prominently advertising Chick-fil-A sponsorship. The city's events draw families from all over the county, and I heard from personal friends and local families that they would not attend this year because of the sponsorship. On behalf of the people I am representing tonight, we felt uncomfortable personally attending these events as employees of a partner organization since we are and have loved ones who are LGBTQ+. When we attended, we brought book lists and resource lists for all ages and attempted to make all community members welcome, but had numerous personal private conversations about our concerns that the Chick-fil-A sponsorship was misguided and missed the mark of inclusion. This was an ill-conceived sponsorship that does not reflect the city of Lacey's goals of being welcoming to all and serving all of the community. I urge the city to focus on equity and inclusion as an organization so that decisions like this can be talked about with input from diverse community members and employees so that hurtful actions like this won't happen. I would like to see all children and their caregivers feel welcome at Children's Day in Lacey. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your comments. Next up is, we have Anna Schleck. Working on bringing her in as well.
She's coming in now, Mayor. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Hey, Anna.
Hi. Greetings. My name is Anna Schleck, and although I live in Olympia and not Lacey, like a lot of people, I think of our entire three-city urban hub as my home. I do most of my shopping in Lacey. I go to many of your parks, many of your events. And in fact, just earlier this week, I attended a marvelous event that your staff worked to make an incredible, incredible evening to honor Nat and Thelma Jackson with a beautiful mosaic that was installed in your community center. I am on the Board of Senior Services of South Sound, and I spend a lot of quality time at the Lacey Senior Center that your staff, your former council members worked many years to build. And it's honestly, as far as I'm concerned, it's a, it's a showcase of the best of what a senior center can be. I come to Lacey because I appreciate and value the, the deep dedication to diversity that your staff, your council, and your community members have. I would like to share one brief story. Mayor Jean Liddell, who somebody who I hope would remember, became the first Filipino-American mayor in the entire United States when she became mayor of Lacey because she was steered away from Olympia. She was steered to Lacey. Lacey has always stood up and done what's right. However, it made me really sad to learn that Lacey has partnered not one year, but two years in a row with Chick-fil-A on your Children's Day. It makes me sad because Chick-fil-A has a long history of funding anti-LGBTQ organizations and political measures. A sponsorship like that sends a message about these families are welcome, but those families are not. It's, it's really important to recognize that it, it takes time and money and staff to make the fabulous events that you folks hold, but there are other corporate sponsors that you could reach out to. So, closing, Lacey has done incredibly powerful work to uphold and foster your diverse community. I sincerely hope that you, as elected officials, as appointed boards with your Equity Commission and your staff, will work to undo the harm that that message has sent and look at your sponsorship policy as well as other policies that may not welcome all the members of your community and our extended community. Because Lacey has always been a leader, being a leader sometimes means making, having missteps. I have great faith and trust that you will look hard at, at, at this issue and do the right thing, as you always have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna. Next up is, we have Jane Tobart.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Jane Tobart is not, she is not on our list of attendees right now.
Okay. Then let's go to the people who've signed up for a public comment here. Dana McCormick. Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Well, I'm Dana McCormick. And also the. Both Anna Schleck and Megan Hall. So, I would like to interrate that our LGBTQ youth are very in tuned with these type of things, with social media, the internet. They know this stuff. So it does send a message to them. They're not, they're not welcome, or the city doesn't support them. Anti-LGBTQ messages undermines decades of progress and further endangers LGBTQ youth, of whom are more than four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Transgender youth rates are much higher, at 82%. Have considered suicide and 40 have attempted. And these are the things we've got to think about. And as a city, and I've listened and I got into your YouTube meetings, I know as a group, regardless, you're all trying to make us be more inclusive and show we are, but also our actions, the sponsorship, there's a serious problem with it. Okay? Nobody reached out to PFLAG and invited us to the table. Nothing. These things are important, and it concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more, Lindsey Fields. Then I'll make a comment.
Is it okay if I start?
Yes, go ahead. Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
My name is Lindsey Fields. I use C- they pronouns, and I live off Rainier Road. I'm talking here today as a citizen who also works for the city of Lacey. Identify as queer, and my comments today are addressing the public comments made by an employee and council members concerning the flag policy update. I first want to note that I am not a special interest group. We are people who deserve respect and kindness. I will not be bullied or shamed into being less than I am, nor will I be shamed back into the closet. Harmful and hateful comments were made at the last council meeting by an employee, but this is not the first time I have heard or had homophobic comments leveled at me while working for the city of Lacey. Within the first five months of employment, I was shown a graphic by another employee who was known to make harmful statements. This graphic was meant to show how holy, good, and virtuous some values were over the others. One of the deviant values was homosexual marriage, which was presented in contrast to biblical, biblical marriage. It was meant to offend, and it did. I raised my concerns about the graphic in the proper channels and had almost no support. Almost nothing was done to rectify the situation. I was offered an apology by HR. That is all. There were zero consequences for the individual. I kept a copy of the graphic if council would like to see it. And on par with my experience and others' experience, the city did not address the situation that happened on September 15th. They did not offer apologies or assurance that they are committed to equity and belonging, or the safety of all employees. To my knowledge, there have not been consequences for the individual who broke the very employee conduct, code, conduct code that he mentioned in his comments. I've talked with other employees now and found that it seems to be the norm at Lacey to ignore problematic individuals who continually feel emboldened to make comments rooted in racism, xenophobia, sexism, and homophobia. Everyone in our community, especially folks who have been systemically excluded and historically oppressed, deserve the basic respect, care, kindness, and safety afforded so readily to others in our community and workplace. This individual felt safe and justified to make those comments in the most public space available to us because of the culture and pattern of inaction by the city. I ask the council to apologize and make amends to all community members and employees who are harmed by these comments, to make a special apology and gestures to the Nisqually and Squaxton people, as the city of Lacey exists on stolen land. Finally, as city council members, you are leaders in our community. There is a responsibility that comes with being in your positions to set the tone for how we treat each other. As your constituent and colleague, it is not only my hope, but also my expectation that you will take this opportunity to step up to the plate and lead. But I also want to note that by and large, my experience with other employees and people working for Lacey has been positive and welcoming, and that I value the work I do for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lindsey. I, I first want to say, Lindsey, thank you for being a Lacey employee. You're very much appreciated. I, I just recently found out about this situation. It is, can be an HR, HR-related item that the city manager is going to follow through on. I know, I speak for him, where he takes this extremely seriously as well, and it's going to go through the process. But I want you to know how much I appreciate you and your work for the city of Lacey, and I'm, I'm sorry that you ever felt anything but welcomed and accepted in the city of Lacey, and I, I hope you never feel like that again. As for the Chick-fil-A corporate sponsorship, this is something that also sort of caught us off guard. And, you know, the, I think this is a, a good example of why I was so passionate about starting the Commission on Equity. Like, we, we don't know what we don't know sometimes. Sometimes we do know, but the Commission on Equity is, is here not only to help advise the, the council, but also help advise the city on issues where traditional inequities have existed. And so this, I've had conversations with the city manager about this too, as soon as I found out about it. And we are referring this to our Parks Board and the Commission on Equity, where we want to make sure that all of our corporate sponsors are, are following the values of our city. And so how we best come up with a policy to ensure that, let's, let the commission give us some recommendations and we can talk it through. But I take this very, very seriously. Anyone who knows me personally knows how big of an issue this is for, for me, for my family, for who I am as an individual, the way I have been raised, my life experiences. And so, you know, on one hand, I'm, I feel embarrassed. On the other hand, you know, we're, we're trying to do the best we can, and sometimes we do fall down. Sometimes we do make mistakes, and it's what you do. And when you, when you, you know, when you're in those circumstances, that I think really tells you what you are as a city. So I have full faith that we were going to come up with a really good policy to address this issue. And I'm, I'm proud that we have a Commission on Equity to, to refer this to instead of, you know, just fly by night and try to figure it out on our own. There are experts, there are people that we can count on to give recommendations for a good policy, and I, I know that's going to come. I want to know how much I appreciate you guys showing up. I know how hard it is to do this, to get up in front of the council on something that is so personal. And so I appreciate it, and I thank you for doing it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in front of this council? Please. Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Good evening, council. First, I want to thank you each for being present tonight and allowing for the opportunity for public comment. My name is David Butler. I've worked for the city of Lacey for about the past five and a half years and lived in Lacey for nearly the half, past decade. The purpose of my comment tonight is to voice my support for the new flag policy that the council recently approved. Recently, there was a public comment opposed to flying the pride flag at city of Lacey facilities, as well as some discussion regarding flying the progress flag by the council. As a member of the LGBTQ+ community and a former city of Lacey resident and a city of Lacey employee, I wanted to share my thoughts on why I respectfully disagree with some of the prior comments shared. To me, the progress flag represents kindness, compassion, and inclusion towards those who have traditionally been underrepresented in our community. When I first saw the pride flag flying at Lacey, I really appreciated the fact that the city recognized those who have been historically marginalized and at times discriminated against. I feel the inclusion of the progress flag is important in showing that our city, and in particular, our youth, feel valued, respected, and welcomed as part of our committee, or as our, part of our kitty, city, excuse me. This is a small effort on the part of the city of Lacey, but one that has a big impact on bringing our community together and celebrating the differences that make us stronger. During my time with city of Lacey, the amount of support that I have felt from our citizens and a number of my coworkers has vastly outweighed the negativity of others. I'm incredibly proud of our staff for making me feel included and accepted, and I'm so grateful for those who have shown their kindness and support to myself and others in the LGBTQ community. I take pride in being part of a workforce and a community which strives to recognize the importance of historical inequalities and does its part to help create a positive and accepting environment for all. I wanted to express my gratitude to the council members who did vote to approve this policy and to the citizens and workers of Lacey for making this community one of acceptance, kindness, and progress. Please know that these actions are appreciated by myself and by others, and will have a lasting impact long into our future of this community.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Thank you again for all the, all the speakers today. Like I said, there's going to be a process that's going to be in place, and I have really, I have to believe that good policies can come from it. So, thank you. Okay. Onto our next agenda item, which is proclamation of Walk to School Month. And is councilmember Stedman not with us tonight?
I haven't seen him, so I asked Carol, Councilmember Cox, to read his part.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead. And let's get started with Councilmember Vasquez.
Thanks. Whereas making bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements a priority can help protect the life and safety of Lacey's youth.
Whereas the city of Lacey is working to add bike lanes, trails, sidewalks, and improve street crossings to better connect our neighborhoods and provide safer routes to school, and?
Whereas increasing physical activity improves the health of our youth, and?
Whereas regularly walking, biking, and rolling to school can be fun and increase students' readiness to learn, and?
Whereas driving students to school in private vehicles contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, and?
Whereas important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children how to be safe pedestrians and bicyclists on our streets, and?
Whereas in October, community leaders, parents, and children from around the world will join together for walk-to-school events to increase awareness about the health and environmental benefits of walking and biking to school. Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as 2022, October 2022, as Walk to School Month in the city of Lacey, and encourage all residents of the city of Lacey to promote the safety and health of children this month and throughout the year by supporting pedestrian, bicycle, and active transportation improvements, while in safe pedestrian and bicycle behaviors, driving responsibly in school zones, and practicing an active lifestyle. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, October 6th, 2022.
And to accept this proclamation is Carrie Wilson, I think, and Deb, and goes on. Hi, Dad. Good to see you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this proclamation and your commitment to healthy communities. And we know that when children are active on their way to school and have safe routes to school, that it's very beneficial for the, for the children. And I'll turn it over for further comments.
I'm Carrie Wilson, and I supervise inner-city transit's walk and roll program. Thank you so much for recognizing October as Walk to School Month. And so if you're not familiar, Walk and Roll's mission is to educate and encourage youth to get around by walking, biking, rolling, and riding public transit. And this year, we are once again partnering with Northeastern Public Schools to hold walk and roll to school events. These events increase safety, reduce traffic congestion, and improve the air quality around schools by encouraging families to consider walking and biking to, to and from school instead of driving in a car. It also provides students with the opportunity to learn and practice pedestrian safety skills and to build some physical activity into their day. This year, we are partnering with Lydia Hawk and Olympic View Elementary Schools so far, and we hope to add more schools to, have more schools join us. We'd like to recognize the support that we get from the Olympia Police Department and the, I'm sorry, the Lacey Police Department and the Lacey Fire Department. Having them come out to the events makes them very special and exciting for the students and families who participate. As always, we invite city council members to come and join us and to walk to school with students. And thank you to our folks from Northeastern Public Schools for coming out to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This is always kind of a fun time to go out and walk with his students. I've done it several times, and we appreciate supporting with this proclamation, and hopefully we can get more kids, you know, walking safely to school. And I think this will hopefully go a little ways to, to helping that goal. So, thank you. Let's see, next up on our count, our agenda is under resolutions, Resolution 1121, the credit card policy. Troy.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. For your consideration tonight is a resolution that will update our current credit card policy. The council last adopted the policy back in February of 2020. For a number of reasons, we haven't been able to fully implement the program, but we'd like to, and as we started to review the program, we thought that it would be most efficient and effective for the city to include travel expenses as an eligible credit card use. In order to do that, we believe we need to increase a transaction limit. So that's the main reason we're before you tonight, is that transaction limit. But I will go through a couple of other areas of changes. So again, the, the main reason is to change the transaction limit from $1,000 to $2,500. And, you know, really, the purpose of this program is aimed at those low-value, low-dollar amount purchases. This is still a relatively low number. It does allow us to become, you know, more efficient, like I said, but we, we would like to incorporate travel expenses within the eligible costs. There's also a proposal to increase the minor equipment purchase limit up to 1,000, up from 500. Really, this is kind of an inflationary action, as well as it brings our credit card policy, you know, more into line with what our fixed asset policy is, which is $1,000 for minor equipment. And there's a number of housekeeping changes within the policy. You could see that in the redline version. There's changes that help us just have a little more clarity in terms of what our internal controls are, and also adds a provision for required training for employees that will be issued cards. So we do think those are needed improvements as well. The Finance Committee did review this at their last meeting at the end of September and moved it to the full council. So it is a staff recommendation that you adopt the resolution thus changing the credit card policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I get a motion, please?
Move to adopt Resolution 1121, amending the system and policies relating to credit card usage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? So how many employees do you think we're going to issue credit cards to once this policy is hopefully adopted?
Well, that's a great question, Mr. Mayor. I would guess, you know, 100-plus. So we have about 314 or 13 employees currently, or at least approved positions. Not all, not all employees will require the credit card, so we do need to identify a, a business need. We're not just going to issue cards for the sake of issuing cards. So employees will have to demonstrate a business need. But I, you know, I think about a third, maybe, maybe slightly more.
And then have we selected a credit card company yet? Are you still looking?
Not yet. We wanted to make sure that the council was informed of the, the policy, and we'll, we'll start that implementation phase. We are looking at a system that is compatible with our financial system. We do want to find, like I said, efficiencies for employees, and I think that's a very critical piece, is that interface between the credit card provider's system and our accounting system, just to kind of ease the workload.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 1121, amending our systems and policies relating to credit card use. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
City manager, do you have any report?
Nothing to report that hasn't been reported in the news.
You want to make a statement or say? You want to make a statement or say anything?
I think some of you know that I've been extended an employment offer to work for the city of Astoria, and I've accepted that. That has been in the local news. As been reported, I intend to finish the budget process, which would take me to close to the end of the year. It has been a privilege to be a city manager and serve the city of Lacey for the last 11 years, but actually be part of this organization for 23 years, so. But I have more time with you, so this is not a farewell. This is just maybe a long goodbye.
Sounds good. Well, and obviously, we've talked a lot for, over the past several weeks on, on this issue. I just want to, again, thank you, Scott, for everything you've done for the city of Lacey. I know we have a lot of times for many more thank yous and congratulations and so on and so forth, but I want you to know how much I appreciate our relationship, how much, you know, we've been able to. you know, we've been able to work together to achieve the goals and priorities of Lacey. And you'll be, definitely will be missed, but congratulations. And I know you have a, will have a great time in Astoria and it'll be, that's what's best for your family and that's what's, that's what's great in the end. Okay, on to standing general committees, the Transportation Committee.
Transportation Committee met on September 6th. And during that meeting, we got a construction update. There are several projects throughout the city that are, a lot of them are pavement reseals. Vehicle charging station is going to be delayed because of material delays. So we're not the only industry or only part of the city that's having delays because of materials. But the overlay projects have been going forward and some of them are completed. There are other ones that will be completed by the end of October. So depending on where you live in the city, some of us drive by the overlay projects all the time. I am one of those people who gets to sit in overlay delays, but they are not that long. I've, I've yet to had to wait, I've never had to wait more than two minutes because of an overlay project. But many of them happen in the summer because of the curing process. So when the rain hits, we usually, you know, delay the project until the following year. There are some that are going out for bid that will start early in the spring. Projects like the Carpenter Road overlay. And then, let's see, what else do we got? Rainier Road is another one of those. And sidewalk repairs, any of you who live in HOAs have no doubt seen that we have trees that uproot some of the sidewalks. So those repair jobs are either outbid or being completed. Those are not weather-sensitive projects, so in, in all cases. We also got an update on, there's a City of Lacey Volunteer Trash Pickup Program that is taking off. And the program will have, you know, many groups can, can apply to be a part of the program. There will be a director of the program. Their, their eligibility is any organization, individual, family, business, corporation, or combination thereof may participate in the volunteer trash pickup program through voluntary efforts. The terms for each assignment will be specified. So in order for you to be a part of the program, of course, your organization has to sign the waiver and you will be designated an area by the program director. Let's see, what else do we got? Well, I think that, oh, one more thing in, in transportation there. A calming device may be getting put down on 57th in the Lake Point area, Lake Point neighborhood, which is the Thornberry-Lake Point kind of conglomeration neighborhood there. Some of the residents have said that there's just too much speeding down some of those roads. Stockton, I believe, is one of them. Compton is another one, but 57th is going to be the focus. So I'll have more on that as we have yet to have any kind of final determination on which of the residents of that street are going to be included as we do our outreach. And that was my report.
Great. Before we go into boards, commissions, and committee reports, is there anyone that has a report today that you just have to get let us know tonight? Is there anything that couldn't be put on until next?
I have one, but it's not mission critical, if that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, it's not mission critical.
Time-sensitive.
Or time-sensitive?
No.
Okay. Well, then I can recommend, can we put that on to our next meeting? Because we're going on to the Budget Workshop and that's going to take up the majority of our time here. And so I would appreciate it if we could, about you, Councilmember Greenstein, do you have anything urgent? Okay.
No, my, my report's going to wait.
Great. Well, then with that, I say we adjourn to our work session. Are we going to, our Budget Workshop, are we going to be here? Or are we going to be over here?
We're going to stay right here.
We're going to stay right here. Do you need five minutes or?
I defer to the council, five minutes for a break, sure?
Okay, and so it's like 12:34, we'll come back right, or 6:34, we'll come back right before 6:40. Geez, let's hopefully it's not, it won't be 12:34, 6:40. Thank you for being here. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll adjourn this to a work session. See you in five minutes. I'm going to open this 2023 Budget Workshop and I'll immediately turn it over to our city manager.
So Mayor City Council, per tradition, we have always had a Budget Workshop to talk about priorities and goals, to make sure that when we do the final budget document, it is well-informed to ensure that your priorities included in that. So I'm going to basically introduce Troy Wu, our Finance Director. He will provide the present condition of our finances from an expenditure and revenue standpoint. And then we'll have some other elements that I will insert myself in that discussion as we talk about the big picture for the 2023 budget process. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Scott. This hasn't always been a tradition. This is a Scott Spence tradition. This is the 11th Annual Pre-Budget Workshop. But as Scott said, we'd like to cover a number of things for the council. You know, the real purpose of this workshop is to get some final direction on some major issues that, budget issues for the following year. We certainly want to make sure that we put together and present a budget that, you know, you all will support. So this is your budget, the people's budget, so we're here to seek input. Okay, so these are the major areas that we'll cover tonight. As Scott said, we'll cover revenues, expenditures. And we'll talk about the major initiatives that are going to be included in the proposed budget. And we'll talk about some workforce considerations. We're going to talk a little bit about the police station and then we'll wrap things up and ask the council for some specific direction on next year's budget. So looking at revenue assumptions, can't talk about city revenues without talking about sales tax. So your projection for 2023 is just over $15.8 million. This is about a $1.5 million increase compared to the 2022 adopted budget. About 27% of all revenues, so again, it's a significant source. I will comment that the, the increase is more of an adjustment to actual versus any sort of expansion to the tax base. So really just looking at what our actuals have been and catching up with that essentially. What we've seen so far, you know, through 2022, I, I believe that all or most categories have recovered from the pandemic. Of course, when those restrictions first went in place in 2020 and continued through at least the first half of 2021, we definitely saw reductions in certain, certain categories of sales tax. But we've certainly seen that recovery throughout 2022 so far. In fact, we've seen a little bit of regression in a, in a few categories. The, I think the main reason for regression is there was a lot of federal financial support out there in the economy. I think that the safety measures as well really kind of forced more local shopping. And I think as we've come out of the pandemic, I think some of those behaviors have gone back to normal. Of course, we don't have as much stimulus money out there in the economy. So we, we have regressed a little bit, like I said, in a few categories, but we're still running above pre-pandemic levels. So I think that's, that's important to think about as well. Here's a five-year picture of our total retail sales tax. You could see in the blue, which is 2022, and the red line, 2021, you could, you know, definitely see increases.
At caption?
Here, let's see if I can do this. Look at that.
Thank you. So we had quite a spike in June, that's great.
Sorry about that. Let me see.
I guess the problem is, is can you move it maybe over to the left so you can still see it? So people who are reading this at home?
Really not a great spot, but yeah.
There's not a great spot, but there you go.
Well, we'll give it a go. We could just stop talking, that might stop it. As, as I said, you could see in 2021 and 22 where the, you know, the increase occurred because of some of that stimulus dollars and the more local shopping. You've seen from my monthly reports, there's a, there's a big spike there in June. There's a little bit of that, that spike that started in May. And that's, you know, as you saw from my report, that is a one-time vendor that we don't expect. In fact, that vendor did not report at all in July. So as I suspected, certainly one-time in nature. So we kind of need to discount what happened in June. That's a significant dollar amount. I, I can't share too many details about that just because of taxpayer privacy, but it's a significant number. So, you know, I think June would have been much closer to that 2021 number. Looking at one of our major retail sales tax categories, construction of buildings. This is, I have quite a few years kind of scattered it within this graph. You have 2007 there in that light blue line. That's, that's the housing boom that occurred back in the 2000s. 2010 is, you know, when we had the great, or actually we were following the Great Recession, but we had a huge slowdown to our economy. And then, of course, you had the more recent years for new construction. We're still running at a pretty high level. We're certainly not as high as we have been the last couple of years, but new construction is, is definitely one of the positive areas within sales tax. General merchandise stores, this is our single largest category for sales tax. My, you know, previous years, I used to talk about how close these numbers were over the years and we, you know, made correlations between our population growth and the lack of growth in this category. But again, you could see the impact of what the pandemic did in terms of changing behaviors. Again, in 2022 in blue and 2021 in red, you definitely see some increases within this category. Our, our general merchandise shopping is, I would call that non-discretionary expenditures. If you just think about the nature of our retail sales tax, we don't have a lot of discretionary type of retail sales. We don't have an auto mall. We don't have, you know, a capital mall as an example. So most of our shopping is, you know, really the staples and the non-discretionary type items. This is the chart I was, I was referring to. We, you know, we've, we've taken a look at general merchandise and our population growth over the years, and we've had significant population growth. But we did not see the same correlation with the growth to sales tax up until 2021. So you could see from 2012 up into 2020, almost a straight line, you know, in terms of per capita sales tax generation despite huge growth of population. But then 2021, we have this, you know, spike up to almost $45 per capita. So it's really interesting to see what the potential shopping behaviors did during the pandemic.
Everyone's buying stuff at home.
Correct. There was, you know, there was restrictions in stores. People weren't leaving Lacey to go to work. You know, there's the old saying, you shop where you work. And I think we definitely were the beneficiaries of that. So this next slide is, I extended it back to 2007. And you could see we were at $55.13 per capita and it's, that 2007 happens to be the last major retail development, which was, I believe, Lowe's down in South Lacey. So we had a lot of retail development leading up until 2007. But since that time, we haven't had any real major retail development. Yet population has grown, which, you know, we could do the math, that that per capita number declines. You can see the 10-year period of the Great Recession and the subsequent slow recovery leading up to 2021. What you're seeing in 2022, obviously we haven't completed the year. We still have five more months of sales tax receipts to collect. But what I did is I took this category, I took the last five months of 2021. I added 1%, which is the increase. is the increase year-to-date for this category comparing 2022 to 2021. So again, I extrapolated out what I, you know, one possible year-end collection could be, and it drops back down to the $42.65. So I think we're returning to normal.
You talked about the spike perhaps being related to people working from home. But do you think that dropping back down, are people going back to work? Because at least for a lot of folks that work for the state, that hasn't necessarily been the case. Remote work has continued. So why such a big difference?
Sure. You know, there's stimulus money, or lack of, this year is definitely impacting that number. You know, I can only speak anecdotally about what I think is happening out in the workforce. I think, I think many employers come back in some form or fashion. You know, our organization, as an example, there are a lot more people back at work. We're still in a, you know, hybrid format of work. We've kind of adjusted to what I would call the new normal. But it's definitely different now than it was 12 months ago in terms of our workforce. And I suspect we're not a lot different than, than other employers.
Well, a couple of things are happening, too. Our population's still going up and up and up. And we haven't had the last five months either. I think you're going to have a really good August and September, which is not shown there yet, so.
That's, that's a good point, Mayor. The, we had major annexation that's in our population number. I mean, we gained 3,500 in population last year. So I mean, significant gains certainly are altering this number as well.
Lenny?
I was just going to add, you know, when you think about that population increase because of the annexations, most of those people were already shopping in Lacey. So we didn't increase, we increased the people, which is going to lower your per capita because they were already spending their money here.
Yeah.
They didn't change their shopping habits because of the annexation.
That's true, but now we're capturing all the deliveries going to their homes where we didn't before.
Absolutely.
That's correct. This is a, this is a historical slide for us as well. The last full year of retail sales tax that we have is 2021. So I've taken that data, and we, we look at some of our neighboring communities, as well as the top three per capita sales tax generating cities in the state. It's kind of a, really depends on the year, but the top three, probably the top five kind of shuffle through the top three. Fife is often there in the top three. But we, when you think about Lacey, we're the 23rd largest city by population, but we only collect sales tax, we're the 83rd generating city in this state. I do want to overlay what happened last year. So you hear in the red text are the rankings and the sales tax per capita from 2020. You could see we lost 12 spots, although we've had significant growth to sales tax. We still lost ground compared to other cities in the state. Same thing happened to, you know, Olympia and Tomater. They slipped a couple spots as well. But I'm certainly not complaining. You know, we certainly are going to, you know, be able to put those monies to good use. But we are falling a little bit behind in terms of what's, what else is happening around the state. All right. Well, let's talk about sales tax for a little bit. This is another significant source of revenue for the city's general fund. The projection for next year is just under $8.5 million. This is a $447,000 increase. We had, again, significant additions to valuation. The total valuation increase from construction and annexation is about $416 million, about $210 million coming from new construction, and $206 million from annexation. So we're continuing to see increases from that. And what's important here is that new construction and annexation is exempt from the 1% growth limitation. So we get to grow sales taxes by this valuation without that limitation. The, the projection does assume a 1% increase. The statutory limit for property tax growth is 1%, or the implicit price deflator, whichever is less. And you could see that the, I think it's the September 27th is the factor that we use, and that implicit price deflator was almost 6.5%. Of course, we all know that inflation has been very high here the last 12 months or so. Well, here's a 10-year history of our property tax levy. What's interesting here is we've had 10 straight years of growth in terms of valuation of existing properties. Our last year of decline was actually 2013. The mayor's smiling at me because we had a
I told you.
We had a nice little conversation at our, you know, employee appreciation barbecue this summer, and we were talking about the high excess valuations. And of course, the county assessor had just mailed out the 2023 valuations and significant increases. In fact, the overall Lacey increase, just on average or the overall, is about 34%. The mayor joked and said, well, what is the levy rate going to be? 50 cents? And I was like, no, no way. Of course, it's, Mayor was more right than I was. So because of that significant increase to valuation, and of course, the addition of new construction and annexation, we're, at this point, if the numbers were not to change, we would drop the general levy rate from 88 cents down to about 67 cents. So significant decrease.
Wow.
The, the valuation from that new construction and the appreciation was about $3 billion. We're at $12.5 billion of valuation now. Pretty, pretty incredible.
Wow.
Do want to show what the potential impacts are to a typical Lacey home. Here you have the 2022 levy at the top with, again, the 88 cent levy times, I'm using $372,000 valuation because according to Redfin, Zillow, my research, is a typical home, a home that's sold in Lacey over the last 12 months is about $500,000 now. So I simply took the $500,000, I reduced it by 34% to get what I think is a typical valuation, at least according to home sales in 2022. You could see, again, the 67 cents per thousand, a reduction in the bond levy rate for parks. Overall, it's about a, you know, $6 increase, $6.05.
Wow. For the year, six bucks.
Do want to show what the impacts of the 1% council authority would be, again, using the $500,000 as a typical home. On the top half of the chart, you have basically the information from the previous slide. The bottom half of the chart, you have without the 1% increase. We have a, it slightly changes the levy rate by less, well, right about a half a cent. So the difference is about, about $3. Want to talk about some other significant revenue sources. Utility tax, we're projecting about $8.9 million, about a 17% increase. This is almost solely based on trend analysis with known rate increases. There are significant rate increases being proposed by PSC for both natural gas and electricity. The city utilities have some, some increases built in as well. So pretty significant increases. As I always like to point out, this source of revenue can be volatile. The weather can change these collections pretty drastically. If we have a warm, dry winter, that changes the use of electricity and natural gas. If we have a cold, snowy, wet winter, those consumptions go up. Same thing in the summer. If we have a hot summer, we sell more water, which generates more tax. So again, this can be a pretty volatile source of income for us. Business and occupation tax, BNO tax, this really pretty much follows the same basis as sales tax. So again, we're seeing a pretty significant increase, about just over a half million dollars. Again, that's really not a statement about expectations as the sales tax or the, the basis is expanding, but rather catching up with current trends. Then emissions tax, we're projecting $168,000. This is a decrease of about $84,000 compared to the historic collection levels. And you could see that the pre-pandemic collection levels are about a quarter of a million dollars. This is definitely one area that has not returned to normal in terms of recovering from the pandemic. So we'll, we'll keep a close eye on this as we move forward. Gambling tax, we're projecting almost $404,000. This is actually an increase compared to the pre-pandemic levels. You could see there about $395,000 was the pre-pandemic activity. So this is an area that's, that's definitely come back. Parking recreation fees, this is really no change from the pre-pandemic level, so about $893,000. We're still, we're still getting there, basically, in terms of recovering and in terms of this level of activity. But we are, we are expecting 2023, and we'll expecting and hoping that we'll return to normal in terms of parking recreation activities. Interest and investment income, significant growth here. We all, I think, are aware of what's happening with interest rates, with the Federal Reserve and their actions. You know, you go back to just January of this year, the overnight investment target rate was 0 to 0.25%. We're right at 3.25% to 3.5% now, significant difference just 10 months later. The reason this percentage isn't even higher is because our core investments, they're just going to take a little bit longer to overturn. We, you know, we have a zero-to-five-year benchmark, so we invest out to five years. So it's just going to take some time to have some of the, some of the city's investments mature and to be reinvested. So it'll take a little while to move that. In terms of the city utility rates, you know, we've had significant discussion with the council last year in terms of what the draft water comp plan has assumed for water rates. We had our same consultant take a look at sewer rates for that same period of time. And of course, back in 2020, the city council adopted the stormwater comprehensive plan, which included long-term rates as well. So these are all consistent with either adopted comp plans or consultant suggested rates or draft comp plans. So for 2023, we are suggesting that the council adopt one-year rates. The increase for water is 5.25%, sewer 9.5%, and stormwater 4.5%. In terms of the impact to an average household for water, a house using 700 cubic feet would be $1.63 more in 2023. For sewer, $2.40. For stormwater, 58 cents. And I'm sorry, my dialogue is blocking. The lot rate is $1.31. That is a 3% increase for lot. In total, it's about $5.92 total increase.
I have a quick question. Obviously, you see the big increases there for water and sewers because we've been talking about doing a septic sewer conversion plan for a long time. When, when are we going to, one second will finally kick in. I know, right now, we're still trying to pay off what Cap City, but when, when are we going to actually start?
We're going to try. I believe it's 2028 in that timeframe.
Yeah, it was a six-year, almost seven-year period, if I remember correctly.
Is, are we, if we can pay off the, because rates, right, what we're collecting changes from year to year, and especially as population increases and so on and so forth, are we going to have a check-in if we're, if we pay that off sooner?
Yeah, it's, I wouldn't
Do you have like a running tally on, on the cost there? And where are we at?
Right. Yeah, it, it might be better to think about it as a cash flow issue versus paying the utility back for the, you know, the fronting of that, that significant project. You know, we are, we are continuing to move forward, as, as the council's aware, with Tomy Estates, that's going to be another significant reduction in terms of septic tank and exposure to our, our water source. But yeah, we'll look at it, you know, holistically as we go year to year in terms of what our cash flow is and what our needs are. You know, we do have staffing capacity as well in terms of designer projects. But yeah, certainly, if we have the cash flow, we could start addressing those important environmental needs.
How many septics in the city limits do we currently have?
1,200? Well, no, that's within at least our
So it's 12,000 overall. I want to say we're more in the 3,000 to 4,000 within the city limits. So
You're counting there even growth there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the $12,000 number. We're about 3,000 to 4,000 within city limits proper.
Okay, let's look at the, some of the expenditure assumptions for 2023. I'm not going to provide a whole lot of detail. When we think about general fund expenditures especially, 2/3 of our expenditures on annual basis goes to, you know, wages and benefits. You know, we've said many times before, our employees are important, most important asset, but they're also our most expensive asset. So looking at our general fund salaries and benefits, really looking at it in terms of a 2022 basis, every 1% of increase of salaries is about $243,000. Every 1% of benefit increase is about $89,000. If we look total city, again, looking at the total budget for 2022, again, using 1%, it's about $315,000 looking at benefits. It's about $121,000 for every 1%. The reason I'm really speaking in generalities is because we have two significant labor groups that we are not under contract with. Our ASME group contract expired at the end of last year. We are still actively engaged in negotiations. The same thing with our Police Officers Guild contract. It also expired at the end of last year, and we are actively engaged in negotiations with that group as well. We do have a couple other police groups, represented groups. You know, our, our Police Management Association, we are under contract through the end of this year, but that does expire. So we're, you know, working on 2023. Our Senior Management Association is under contract for next year. And you can see here are the adjustments. It's 90% of CPI with Min and Max. And looking at specifically at employee benefits, we have a slight increase to our PERS contribution. So PERS is our retirement pension contribution for the majority of our employees. We have a separate pension plan for our law enforcement group. So just a 0.14% increase to contributions next year. Actually, they go into, they've already gone into effect, but the state is on a July to June calendar year. Regions Health Insurance is going up 4.5%. This is what's just recently adopted by the AWC Benefit Trust. So this is a final number for next year. Kaiser is going up 7%. In terms of our employee coverage, Regions is the choice of about 60% of our employees, and Kaiser is about the remainder, so about 40%. Our dental coverage is not going up, so good news. Vision is not going up as well. The labor and industries The Labor and Industries just released their increases for next year. It's an overall increase of four point eight percent. But when you look at L and I rates, it really depends on the worker classification. So these are three major areas for the city. You could see they're all higher than that four point eight percent. So police is going up fourteen percent. Administration and Public Works and Parks is going up seven percent next year. I will point out that we do get, there is a an experience multiplier for L and I rates. And historically, Lacey has done very well in terms of employee injuries. So I don't think there will be any different next year. So I I think our actual increase will be less than these numbers here on screen. So major budget initiatives. We are going to be proposing that we continue with our economic development strategic investment in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. We don't have anything specifically identified, but we do want to include something in a budget so we can remain flexible. As you know, as things change out there in the world very, they change very quickly, and we want to be prepared to make those investments if the council so chooses. We have two hundred thousand dollars for Climate Action Plan implementation. The total budget for next year will be four hundred thousand dollars. So this is an area that we're not expecting to spend the two hundred thousand. It's been appropriated for this year, so we'll clear, ask the council to carry that over for a total of four hundred thousand in two thousand twenty three. We're going to be replacing the the bridge at Woodland Creek Community Park. That's the connector bridge there to the the trail. It's about a hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. And we have in the budget a police virtual trainer at three hundred thousand dollars. We were fortunate enough to have a trainer from the Chehalis Tribe that we used, but they have since taken that back, and we would like to continue with this critical training. So again, three hundred thousand dollars. Do you want to talk about some of the carryover projects from two thousand twenty two? There's a number of reasons why they need to be carried over. We've talked about the supply chain challenges that we've had. The city itself has had, you know, workforce challenges just like everybody else. We've had a number of vacancies within our workforce. So we very much want to continue these initiatives, but to continue them, they will probably have to be carried over into two thousand twenty three. So the police station, of course, will continue along that path as we are in the design, thirty percent design phase. And of course, we're looking at the property acquisition in two thousand twenty two. Great Kyo Community Park Phase One A, of course, the council made that a top priority as well, so we'll continue with that. The council's neighborhood grant program will continue at sixty thousand dollars. We'll carry over any funds that aren't expended this year. Commission on Equity will continue at twenty five thousand dollars. The LED streetlight conversion will continue. This is about two hundred thousand dollars, and what we're doing is, as we need to replace lights, we're replacing them with more efficient LED lights as as we go. Was there a question, Councilor Vasquez?
What is the twenty five thousand dollars for the Commission on Equity for?
Hand things over to our Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, council. So in the past, the Commission on Equity has used that funding for a consultant to help with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Strategic Plan, as well as looking to the future for an equity map and other equity tools that might help inform policy decisions.
Great, thanks for this.
On the L D LED streetlight conversion, I remember, it's gotta be close to ten years ago where we started this, and you thought, oh, in ten years, we'll have it completely done. Where 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 are we at on converting all of our streetlights?
You're correct, it was a ten year program. Scott and I were just.
Did I read your mind?
I think we're in year six, maybe seven. I think two thousand twenty three would be year seven.
It's been, it's a great program. Again, we just have about three or four more years to finish up the program. But I just, again, for council and for the public, this is a good reminder. So we have a little over five thousand lights. And we actually had a replacement schedule that really fit about five hundred that would burn out of the old high pressure sodium. So you're going out there, replacing the light, it makes best sense to replace those as we go. And again, we're about seventy years on that journey, and we'll have that done. And if LEDs ever do fail in the future, it's not going to be a catastrophic failure. We can actually do it, you know, when they actually fail. So kudos to Scott's group and Public Works actually do that.
So you're seven. God, it seems longer than that, but.
It's such a good idea.
It's a wonderful idea, it's a great idea.
And the two thousand twenty three budget will continue with our police succession planning, which is funding three positions out of a committed reserve that the council established. Also, I'd like I'd like to talk about the two thousand twenty three transportation benefit district projects. I will point out there on the map, that is a long term list of projects, really look focusing on the blue lines. I know it's difficult to see, so I apologize for that. But you do have the areas that we are looking at in terms of overlay for two thousand twenty three. In total, this is about seven point five million dollars. This is, this will be our largest year for overlay. We are looking at our reserve level and just kind of the need that's out there. So we're in a really good position to rehabilitate a large number of our 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 street system. I'll also point out that it's not on this slide or on the map, but there's also five hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk rehabilitation as well. The utilities capital program, you know, this is really what's driving our utility rates. We have significant capital improvement programs in all three of our utilities, but primarily water and sewer. So in two thousand twenty three, we will be proposing an eighteen point nine million dollar capital program. You could see there listed there on screen the more significant projects that we have scheduled for next year, the tear cargo reservoir, a number of different pH treatment projects as well. Waste Water's proposed capital budget is about twelve point five million. A lot of lift station work and rehabilitation, certainly in the next, you know, four to five years moving forward. The stormwater capital budget is about one point two million dollars. A couple, couple of projects are listed for you on screen. Kind of as a reminder for the council, the long term capital program, so for water, so think two thousand twenty two through two thousand twenty nine, one hundred and sixty one million dollars. Waste Water, that same time period, two thousand twenty two to twenty nine, it's about fifty two million dollars. So significant expenditures on our horizon. Continuing with the major initiatives in the budget, transportation budget, nine point nine million dollars being proposed. A lot of the work that will be done next year will be design and a right of way acquisition. The right of way acquisition is going to focus on the roundabout at College and Sixteenth. We have some bicycle and pedestrian improvements that will be proposed, as well as electric vehicle chargers. And the final kind of major initiatives, especially in terms of capitals, are fleet replacements coming in at just under one point four million dollars for two thousand twenty three. I do want to point out that we are starting to look at our electric vehicle conversion. Of course, the state has a a long term deadline to convert all of your vehicles, but we don't want to wait till the last minute, so we're starting that now. So we do have a reserve established to help us get to that point. So we're going to be using about one hundred and forty four thousand dollars of reserves for those, kind of that first wave of electric vehicle replacements.
Before we go on on the transportation side, I know this council's been talking for a while about seeing a roundabouts on College Street and Midtown, Rick. I know we were just chatting about it. Are you thinking that's gonna be a twenty four project? Or when 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 do you think that we get started on that and what will be the six development?
Right now, we're anticipating a design to start beginning of two thousand twenty four and construction potentially in two thousand twenty five. However, we are working on finalizing the M O U between St. Martin's Abbey and M G R and the city, and depending on timing of construction of private investment, that that schedule may change.
Okay, thank you.
There are dollars in the current budget for some of that conceptual design as well.
Good.
I do want to point out that we are still investing significant dollars in our community in terms of social services, social services and homelessness. Not a lot of change from the current year. We have some inflationary increases built into some of the programs going forward. And as I alluded to earlier, we will have a number of carryovers. Or really kind of just depends on what happens during this last quarter of the year. But, you know, definitely, we've been impacted by the supply chain challenges. In fact, I think the only supplies that we really haven't seen delays to are concrete and asphalt. Pretty much everything else has had some sort of delay with it. So with that, I'll give my voice a break and hand things over to the city manager.
So as you know, the workforce of Lacey is the most valuable asset that we have for the organization to complete the essential services to the community. And I'm going to go through some additions to the budget. As you know, too, that there's about two thirds of the budget impact of our general fund when you think of the labor costs as well as the benefits. So first, I want to go next to what we've done in two thousand twenty two. We typically try not to make mid year adjustments, but we've been subject to turnover and people going to different positions and resignations. And we've talked about this on council a number of times, that we're still about ten percent of our budgeted positions. So that represents about thirty positions. And as we welcome new employees, there also is a capacity issue with that. So think about it, the time it takes for someone to learn the job. You know, you can make an argument, it takes two, three years to sort of own that position and actually be proficient at that. And so like when you leave a, you know, lose a twenty, you know, year or some city engineer, you can't just replace that overnight. And so those are some of those issues. During two thousand twenty two, we had a couple areas that we were trying to show up. One was the utility area, also the finance department, as well as H R. H R has done a significant amount of work to try to get a workforce to do what we need to do as a city. But for two thousand twenty three, we are looking at eight positions to add to the budget. And I want you to sort of think as we go through these, think of capacity and also priorities. So first up is in our public safety department, our police department. So Commander Upton and also Commander Mack have indicated they will be retiring within two years. And we need to be planning ahead, be more thoughtful about succession planning. We don't want to go to a situation where there's, we have thirty days and hires someone and then try to basically regain what we basically have had for really almost three decades. So for that, we're going to a lieutenant model when we talk about our command structure. So right now, we have a chief, deputy chief, and commander. So we will be going to two lieutenants in some point in the future, four lieutenants. The benefit of having a lieutenant structure, too, they'll be embedded with our blue and our gold team. So you'll actually have direct supervision over really our two significant shifts to provide our twenty four seven public safety. So those are added in the two thousand twenty three proposal. We're also adding a detective within our ranks. We are really kind of, again, a capacity issue. You've, unfortunately, our region has had a number of level of uses of force that then require an activation of the Metro Investigative Team. And depending on which jurisdiction that is, that does pull us into, even though it may not be our direct police case. And so that has taken away some of the capacity of the police department to basically respond to those issues that we still need to serve a fifty eight thousand population. So those are the three positions we're adding in the police department. The other issue, and this should be no surprise, we are going to be adding a social service coordinator. So if you think of the city of Lacey, we have sort of pride ourselves as sort of being, I'll say, multi tools for a better lack of word. If I look at Rick, Rick's doing a director job, he's also doing regional housing council, he's also embedded in homeless coordination, affordable housing. And at some point, that has taken away capacity from our key executive team to actually function and actually monitor and direct their departments. So a social service coordinator, in the future, I think this some, some of this expense can be offset with the Community Development Block Program, which at some point, council has indicated that we would take ownership of that program. This would also allow this position to talk about the homeless strategies that we need to have more ownership of that and actually have someone dedicated that and not really have three different positions. If you think about what we're currently do with homeless response, you know, I own a part of it, Rick owns a part of it, Shannon's embedded in it, our police department's embedded, and so we would just need a dedicated resource for that. We're also providing individual contracts like the Genesis House, and that's an opportunity for this position to oversee that. So there's some specific issues that this position would benefit the organization. The other one is a diversity equity inclusion coordinator. I know council's had this discussion even back in two thousand twenty. I think this is long overdue. I think it speaks for itself, but it does show commitment from the organization about how important this issue is and really to ensure that our culture is going in the right direction. So that will be another added position. Additional positions that we're talking about is a climate sustainability coordinator. As council knows, we are working on a regional basis. We have a number of initiatives going on. Again, this is a situation where, you know, Rick has had a part time issue with that that priority of council. So is Grant, so is Hans. At some point, if we're going to leverage the two hundred thousand dollars that we had basically allocated in two thousand, or sorry, twenty twenty two, we need to have a dedicated resource to be able to monitor it and actually fall through on those priorities. So we have a climate sustainability coordinator. Another position that we're looking at is a housing coordinator. You know, Rick and I talked about this or lament about this sometime. We launched a great program, which is our accessory dwelling unit program, right before the pandemic. And really, that program needs, again, renewed ownership and have someone to kind of monitor and actually push that program, promote it. We also have a great housing action plan for our community. That person would be able to help with that. The other thing that this resource can also help us and also provide capacity back to Rick's group is to work on those permanent supportive housing unit solutions that we need desperately in our community. So that will also be an added benefit. We're also looking at a parks comprehensive planner and coordinator. So one of the major priorities that were identified in the work plan for city council was really our recreational assets. We are obviously beginning the Great Kyo Phase One project. We have also just a number of projects that parks is embedded in. We mentioned that the the bridge at Woodland Creek needs to be replaced. That is taking a lot of capacity away from our director of parks. And so at some point, we need to provide her sufficient resources so she can actually manage her program with all the responsibilities that she has. So those are the eight positions that we are including in the two thousand twenty three budget proposal. Next slide. You know, we always show this slide to kind of show is sort of a benchmark where we have been over the years. You can make an argument, we're staying steady with the population growth that we've had, but I think there's just an overall recognition that we've had tremendous growth really in the last decade, and we need to keep up, and we need to add sufficient resources. But we also need to be mindful that we can sustain the workforce that we're paying for. So again, that just shows really how many people are serving on a per thousand basis. And so we've used this graph for a number of years. Is there a question? No. Oh.
I don't see him. No, he's fine.
Okay. So I want to transition to really a significant question before council, which is also an identified priority for council, which is the police station question. So I want to show a couple slides here, and this is for the benefit of the public and for people in the room, is that we have a station that was built in nineteen eighty five. We had a population at that time of fifteen thousand, and we had about fifteen full time commissioned officers. I would make an argument that we have well used that facility, which is fast approaching forty years. I know Councilman Greenstein was on the tour when we did this during cops, cars, and kids. It seems like, for the most part, everyone that walked through the facility realized that it was a need of an upgrade. And so as a community, one of the essential services we do provide is public safety, and a police station is part of how we provide that safety to the community. Oh, was there a question? Oh. Oh, okay. Man, I was on a roll.
Sorry.
Did you lose it? Did you lose it?
No, I'm good. One thing, too, again, a police station, we need to be mindful of the fact that when it was built in nineteen eighty five, the nature of public safety has completely changed, if not radically so. I would ask or invite anyone to come to our police station and actually walk through. When I think of someone who's a victim of crime, and if you go through our current facilities, you are. our current facilities, you are going through the entire, you're going to be going past officers, our workforce. And I think of the impact that has on someone who's been a victim of crime, and we need to do a better job of making sure that they have a private space to be able to share what has happened to them. Likewise, if we have someone who has broken the law and needs to be in the judicial system, that person is in handcuffs going through the station. That's not safe for our civilian workforce or even our officers. So it causes a couple of conflicts. So again, clearly, the need is there. You can advance the next slide, Troy, and then the next one. I'd like to thank St. Martin's University, well, actually, Abbey and specifically, for being able to allow us to buy property just north of City Hall as part of the campus. This is going to allow us to solve this problem. So what I want to talk about with council is a potential. So how do we afford a potentially 40-plus million-dollar facility? And I think I've always talked about in the past that we have done a great job of identifying reserves for our priorities. The great thing about reserves are, is you can always look at our priorities and reprioritize those as we get more information and make better decisions for the future. So a couple of things have happened that allow us to sort of rethink, what is the best way to finance a public safety facility? So we have a couple of reserves, and I'm going to have Troy walk through, but just big picture. We have always had a commitment with Nisqually Tribe potentially to invest in the Gateway slash Quaymuth property. That project is probably still, I would say, 24 months away. So there is $8 million in a committed reserve by council. That can be reprioritized, and I would recommend that we should think about putting it toward the police station. We also have the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, which we roughly have about $6.84 million. So I've taxed Shannon a couple of times about what is the best way to apply these funds. And with one point, we had talked about using it for permanent supportive housing. Again, some things have changed. We've had a partnership, or we do have a partnership with the state with a rights-of-way initiative. And there's a potential now that those dollars can be reconsidered for other priorities. So if you combine the $8 million that was committed for Gateway, and you take the $6.8 million, and just for sake of argument, make it 7 million, there's now 15 million that could be directed toward a police station. The other area, and I'll credit again Shannon, also Troy, a rethinking of what we're doing with REIT. So REIT is real estate excise tax. And typically, or traditionally, we have put that toward our road infrastructure. But an allowable use for that is also public facilities, governmental facilities. So in looking at the fund balance, if we could take $10 million within our, which is in our Terrell Street Fund, but actually pull it back out and apply it toward the police station, that would give you a combined funds of $25 million that you could apply toward the police station. So now we have an issue of a $15 million financing issue. How best to do that? So you could, as a council, go down the councilmatic route, which would be in your authority. And then what we could do is you have then identify future revenues to satisfy that bond commitment, which if you use roughly 5% to 6%, that's probably about a $1.3, $1.4 million annual payment. You probably could still do that with the REIT revenue that comes in on an annual basis. That would avoid an impact to property taxpayers, which we estimate would be close to about $140 if you have a half-million-dollar home. That'd be a savings. It would benefit everyone. Council's always had, or a discussion in the past about, if we do have reserves, we should go through our reserves before we do a public ask. And so this would be in line with that thinking if city council wanted to finance that with existing revenues and a councilmatic process. And so that is, I think, a consideration. I know council at one point talked about what do we do with ARPA dollars. I think this would be a priority that you could redirect that to. And I think it's worthy of discussion, and it would be part of the budget. The other sort of argument why this does make sense, we are losing ground to inflation every month. If we know a path to finance this facility, this would allow us to get to the 30% design stage, which should be done hopefully around November. Then we can go directly into the final design stage, and then you would get there quicker from a construction standpoint. And then who knows, maybe the economic environment's a little bit more predictable and maybe more bid friendly, if you will, when we actually do the construction of it. So I'm going to point to Troy, just, I think, a couple of questions council may have. One, I just want to see those dollars. That's great, city manager, you identified $25 million. And second, just to sort of also reassure council, we still have reserves to do other priorities. I think we still have capacity. So I'll have Troy to sort of highlight those main areas. Areas. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Scott. I'll try to make this a little bit bigger, and yet still. Okay, we've, we've, we've used this same worksheet for a number of years as our exercise with the council to actually identify and commit reserves. So I won't spend a whole lot of time going through the, you know, the structure of the spreadsheet. But here is, as, you know, what Scott referred, you know, the ARPA dollars. And what I'll point out here is 2021 here in this, in column Y, and then 2022 in column Z. We don't know what the cash balance is for 2022 yet, so I haven't added any, any additional funds to 2022. So but rest assured, we have received the second tranche. So we do have the 6, 6,856,000 roughly of ARPA dollars in hand. So you do have your, as Scott said, 7 million in that reserve. Here, whoops, I'm sorry. Highlighting the Gateway Development Investment is the 8 million that Scott referred to. And that's been a long-term commitment by the city council. Let me switch tabs here to show you our Terrell Street Fund. This is a, this is a capital fund. So it's a little bit different than a general fund in terms of council action, in terms of designating reserves. But you could see that there's a 30, almost $39 million reserve at the beginning of 2022. The only real obligations at this point are the mitigation fees, that's traffic mitigation, that must go back to very specific projects. So, you know, there's easily $10 million there for the council to consider. Going back to, to general fund, again, $25 million is a very large number. And we do want to give the council comfort that other priorities are still, still have funding for them. I mean, these, this long list of reserves has been a longtime exercise of the city council to match dollars with your strategic vision, as well as the, any initiatives you identify. But we, we do have quite a few reserves that, you know, will go towards equipment replacement, facility replacement, in case there's an emergency. We have $3 million that was identified through our six-year financial planning process. So it's $3 million to help us get through what I would call the valleys of, you know, when we have down, economic downturns. But there's $3 million that has a safety net for the city. I don't know why I lost my mouse. You know, there's, here's your police succession planning reserves here. You do have $2.5 million in strategic investment set aside. In the short term, you could repurpose those funds if needed, if something were to, you know, something severe happened in the economy. You could just, we have identified, and the council hasn't actually been briefed yet, but we have identified $5 million for the development of Great Cuyahoga Park Phase One. So another, you know, initiative that the, the city council has made a priority, and there is already funding for that. So, you know, I, I do hope that you have comfort that there are other reserves. There are reserves that are available in case we need them in terms of the severe economic downturn. So, you know, certainly turn this back over to the, to the council. But, you know, this is why we do have reserves. We have reserves to address initiatives of the council. We do have reserves to address emergencies as they arise.
And I do want to just bring up one of the reserves. So we still have our two-month operating reserve, which is very important, too. So that's, that's a foundational element of any reserves. And so what Troy just identified are in addition to that. So again, to provide confidence and comfort in council that by doing this proposal doesn't jeopardize our financial future.
So regarding the $8 million that's been set aside. I see Lenny has his hand up also.
Can you mute yourself, Lenny?
The $8 million that was committed to the Quaymuth project, if we spend that now, how do we restore it if we have a partnership where maybe they're expecting that we're going to pitch in? Where does that money come from if we spend it now and the project launches in two years?
So I'm going to invoke a mayor and council discussion that happens every year. So you can probably predict, if not estimate, given the fact that we have 90% of our workforce that is currently working, we are going to have budget savings going into 2023. So that is how we have been able to fund reserves because of savings each year. It's hard to predict what that would be, but my guess is would be probably north of $3 million. But given the fact that we are 30 positions down and we haven't done other things, you can rest assured that's how we'll build those back over a couple of years.
And so the 8 million, I think, I think that is an important reserve. Every time we've had a conversation with, with the tribe, they're very well aware of this number, too. And we've had, we've talked about several different things over the years, including the indoor facility and, and partnering with them on that. And I think it's important. These are only a few. He's, Troy's highlighted a few of our reserves. If you, you look at our overall reserves, we're talking 50 million in reserves.
Lenny has a question.
Yeah. So, I mean, we have, where we get it from is, is sort of, how we move it around is, is, you know, a question. But we're doing pretty well when it comes to reserves. Lenny?
Thank you. I have a comment and a couple of questions. Comment, I'll, I'll start there. I, like Scott mentioned, I spent some time with him and the chief and some of our officers on, in this, in the police station not too long ago. And every person that we took on that tour, I am convinced would 100% support this, this project. Because I think everyone realized the incredible need we have for a new police station. So I think that part is clear and obvious and not even, not even a discussion point for me. My two questions. What does that do, taking that chunk from the Artillery Street Fund, what does that do to our ability to make sure we can continue to maintain, obviously, our roads? That, that's my first big question. And then the second question would be, why? So I support using the reserves. I think that's what they're there for. So I think that's a great decision. I question why we would do this as a councilmatic bond for the additional 15 million and not go out to the public for that. And I just want some understanding of why we would do one over the other.
So let me try to answer the first question, Councilman Greenstein. So first, our Terrell Street Fund is really set up for a one-time capital, so not necessarily ongoing maintenance. If I'm going back to the numbers that Troy mentioned, I think there's about 37, 38 million there. Historically, that fund has, you know, actually hovered around 17, 18, 20 million, which I think is sufficient for our obligations. And again, a credit to, you know, Scott's group, they have done a great job of getting federal and state grants, which has helped bolster that fund. So we've had less reliance on, say, REIT dollars. And given, again, it's just a question of priorities. You know, you can do roads, or you can do public infrastructure like a police station. So hopefully that answers that question. I think we need to be somewhat realistic when we go to the voters and ask for a public bond, especially when it comes to construction. So again, as we talked about in open session before, there is a two-part threshold. You need a 60% majority, a supermajority, but you also need 40% of the voter turnout from the last general election. There are times when people have voted, they may have voted from a 60% standpoint, but maybe they got the full voter turnout. I think, as you mentioned, too, this is really an identified need. So do we go to a public vote, or do we, if we have sufficient reserves, can we do that on our own and actually do that? I think also, too, it's recognized the fact that by using reserves and doing councilmatic, we take the burden off the property taxpayer by not having to, for them to incur a property tax increase. Additionally, I think we're all concerned about what happens in the future for the economy. I think, as you know, anytime that we go into a downturn in economy, it is more difficult to pass a public vote because people are concerned about their household budgets, which is normal and natural. So I think that would be the response to the second question.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So are you, are you looking for direction here, Scott? Or are you just, where, where you're, where are you at? You know, the, the, the thing is, is obviously, why we have so much money in our, our Terrell Street Fund right now is because we've been supplementing that with REIT. And that's the real estate excise tax. And just look what our housing market's done over the past couple of years. I mean, we've gone from 17 million to 35 million. I mean, it's, we've seen an incredible boom. Now, that is slowing down right now, as a council member can attest here, a couple of my council members can attest here. And so that, you know, is, you know, concerning. But I still think, if you look at our historic numbers, we're going to be able to continue to meet our obligations there. I, I've sort of been thinking this was going to be the direction we needed to go for a while. You know, our own council policies and procedures says, let's look at reserves before we raise property, you know, before we raise taxes. And, you know, we're, we're actually being pretty conservative here, using these reserves along with just taking the, the, you know, a bond for 20 million. I think it's, you know, we're being pretty conservative there because, you know, we could almost pay for this whole police station 100% with the reserves if, if, if we wanted to. And so to be able to ask the public to pay more in property taxes when we can cover this, you know, within existing funds and not raise taxes, I just, I couldn't with a straight face ask the public to pay more on a property tax, which we, I know Councilmember Greenstein's pretty, you know, and pretty thinks that thing would pass. But man, if it didn't pass, then what would you do? Right? I mean...
The only, the only I would say to that, Mayor, is that would never be a reason not to go to the public. If, if, if the reason to not go to the public is because we're afraid the public would say no, well, then the public is telling us something by saying no. And I, I don't think that would ever be a reason that I would consider for not going to the public. The one reason that I would consider going this route in this case is because we are primarily using reserve funds, and we are saving the citizens, the taxpayers, from an increase in property tax. So that was my, that's my reason that I, that I am leaning in the direction of supporting this option. But it would never be because I didn't want to hear the public. Because if the public said no, then it would be no. I mean, that, that is their decision.
Well, and, and I totally understand that. But there's a, there's a lot of reasons that go into a public saying, no, I don't want to increase my property taxes. There's a lot, you know, no one wants to increase their property taxes. But we still have a huge need for a police station. And so, you know, we can get into semantics there, but that is important. I know Councilmember Cox also wants to bring up another issue about ARPA and so on and so forth. That, we are just learning about this now, which is a little frustrating. But you want to bring, bring that up?
Yes, please. I just found out late this afternoon that the county was planning to propose, now that they know the ARPA funds weren't going to go to be buying a motel, which was the original intended use for those, for permanent supportive housing. They were proposing to, to take those funds and pair them with funds from the county and Tumwater, and I think maybe some Olympia dollars, too, to go into building some permanent supportive housing on this Franz Road site, which is land that the city of Olympia and Thurston County purchased over the last year. So I'm, I'm really torn because I think this is a, a great idea that Scott has put forward tonight. However, the need for permanent supportive housing is greater than ever. So I would propose that we take part of the ARPA money and put it toward the police station, and part toward the permanent supportive housing thing, and ask staff to work out the details with the other jurisdictions on that.
I, I appreciate that. What I, I think needs to happen is, we haven't been at the table at all from this discussion. I, obviously, you just brought it today. You're just hearing about today. Staff is just hearing about today. What I would recommend is that, you know, this is a proposal. There's several different ways we can, we can figure this out. We, I think we need to get some more information from the county and, and, and figure out what's going on there. And, and, you know, I also want to help, but we need to figure this out. So, Councilmember Vasquez, do you have something?
Sounds like we're short on details. But do they have an idea of how much is needed for the plan for Franz Road? Like total, and what our piece of it would be? Because it's public Because it's public knowledge that we estimate that Lacy's share of the ARPA dollars is six point eight million dollars. How much did they think that they needed for the plan that they're putting together?
Well, I think they're going to be asking for all of it, but what I, I can send you all what I just got today is, is a very drafty proposal, and I'd be happy to send that to everybody.
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Essentially, all I'm asking for tonight is that we don't shut the door on the ARPA funds.
Rick, do you have, you look like you want to say something?
No, I was just prepared to ask the, answer the question, but Councilmember Cox did answer the question about how much they were looking at commitment, and it was the full allotment of the Lacy ARPA dollars.
What's, what's frustrating for me here, and I'm sorry, I haven't processed a hundred percent yet. I'm so, I'm still stewing a little bit, is, you know, at the beginning of ARPA, I asked all the entire region saying, hey, we are willing to commit our ARPA dollars for permanent supportive housing. I said that to the county. I said that to Olympia, to Senate Tumwater, saying we should work together. And what I got back was, oh, we have other priorities. And so now we get to the end here, they've spent down most of their ARPA dollars. And they're like, oh, you say Lacy, you still got those ARPA dollars? And let's use that for permanent supportive housing. I mean, it feels a little disingenuous at this point. That being said, let's get some more information and see what, and see what their proposal is. And I'm willing to see if we can help in some way. But boy, the fact that we haven't even been at the table this entire time when it comes to that project is frustrating. And for them to come down at the last moment and ask us for all of our ARPA dollars is even a little more frustrating. So, but, Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, I would just add, Mr. Mayor, that, first of all, I agree a hundred percent with what you, with the comment you just made because you did, we did talk about that from the beginning, about everyone pooling their ARPA dollars. And like you said, there was not a lot of support from the other jurisdictions. So it'd be very important to me, and before we make any final decision here, I want to know what everyone else is putting in. I mean, you know, they're talking about all of our ARPA dollars, but how much of theirs? What percentage of everyone else's ARPA dollars are we talking about? That'd be really important information because, you know, this is just so typical of how these things have happened over the last couple of years in that we hear about things after they're like, they've already made all their decisions. And it's frustrating, extremely frustrating.
Scott?
So one other element, too, I want to be mindful of the fact that we're working with estimated numbers for the police station. And it always concerns me as we get through design and we start to know that we have a better sense or an idea what true costs are going to be. So when I say forty, forty million plus, I just want to make sure we still have that capacity. That number could move, hopefully not too much north, but that's very much of a possibility. Hopefully, we'll know more in November when that process gets wrapped up. So that, that needs to be part of that discussion, too.
Can I just add, you know, I, I share the frustration that has been voiced tonight. And I, I've had a couple of hours to bring my temperature down a little bit before the meeting tonight. But I, I think it's really important we don't lose sight of who we're trying to help here and what social problems we're trying to solve.
Sure. And I think everything is also scalable, too. So, you know, let's just figure this out. Rick, do you have something?
Yeah, just to add in terms of timing and, and schedule as well, because we, I know we do have a, a work session next week. We could probably bring this, the details of what the proposal is for the council to take a look at and discuss and debate. But also, too, I just want the council to be where we have a regional housing council meeting coming up this next Wednesday. And this proposal is intended to be on that agenda as well. So I'm going to work with staff and talk about timing of that and, and see how we can have a little bit more detailed conversations and learn more about details of this proposal that's been generated by the, the other jurisdictions.
Okay. So, and we'll kind of maybe get to this later, but I guess the, the direction I would like to have, this is something we would be presenting as part of the budget process. It can still be a discussion point as we go through the hearing process, but that would be part of the proposal we'd be looking at. You can make an argument, how much money do we need, I guess, in 2023, because we wouldn't be falling to construction. But it would be helpful to get final direction for staff so we can plan ahead and have some certainty.
Is now the time, are, are you done with your, the presentation for today?
I've got a few slides. I'll, I'll bring us home really quickly.
Please.
Okay, just to kind of summarize, you know, the budget and budget perspective. In short term, we do have the financial capacity to respond to any sort of downturn or economic uncertainty. You did see the list of reserves. You know, we've been preparing for this moment, you know, where Lacy's done a really good job in terms of staying conservative and yet having the capacity to plan if things do, do take a turn for the worse. You saw the significant numbers in the capital improvement programs for the utilities. That's going to continue in terms of regulation, in terms of aging infrastructure. So that will continue for the foreseeable future. We're going to continue our focus on social services. You know, obviously, from the, the previous discussion here, we're going to keep our, our eye on that target. And then just kind of an underlying theme, we've, we've just been constantly trying to address growth to service demands, more and more regulation, and I'll say unfunded regulation coming our way, which is required, increases to our workforce. So a lot of challenges, but again, I think the Lacy approach and strong fiscal policies has really allowed us to maintain our service levels, maintain our workforce, and to continue to provide those services that our citizens have come to appreciate. So there are a few items we'd like to get some direction from you. One, we want to make sure that the council is supportive of the eight positions that Scott presented. We would like to include these in the budget, so really don't need a official vote, but just, you know, some, some consensus that you are supportive of the additional staff.
Okay.
I actually have a question about the first one.
Can you turn on there?
The first one, I don't know the difference between the lieutenant model and the current model. And so I, I was just wanting to get, I should have asked back then, but what's the difference between the two?
Well, it's a great question. So, yeah. There's a whole bunch of structures, but actually, I think the trend is more going to lieutenants. I'll be very upfront with you. It is lieutenant is a less expensive employee option because, I mean, lieutenant in terms of a rank. We are trying to get to a point where we have direct supervision of our blue and gold team. Right now, the commanders are split with not only overseeing basically patrol. You have one commander that does that, and then you have the other commander has to oversee detectives and our community resource unit and all the other ancillary stuff. And so to some degree, we just need more direct oversight over that public safety element of it. And so when I say going from lieutenants to commanders, I mean, ultimately, the commander rank would be phased out over time.
But it allows more focused supervision of the teams that do different types of work.
Right. It's important to make sure that we have direct supervision over patrol that are with on those same schedules. Right now, we just don't have that capacity to do that. So we are relying on sergeants and corporals, but I think in the future, and I'm looking at deputy chief, that would be the direction we need to go in terms of making sure we have that correct oversight, just given the importance of public safety and the liability that goes with public safety. Does that help?
So we would have more oversight per shift?
Yeah.
Is that the, the real goal here?
Correct. So ultimately, you'd have probably two lieutenants and then two lieutenants in the future, so a total of four.
Could we ask the deputy chief?
Yeah. The deputy chief would say, everything the city manager said was perfect. I can't really add anything to that.
It was really a perfect description. I was actually hoping that the chief was going to jump in, but I think he might be indisposed right now. We were texting a little while ago. But essentially, what it comes down to is we are trying to get more oversight for all of our crews. And right now, the way that it's set up with only two commanders overseeing two divisions, the necessary oversight that we need for our sergeants to actually be out on the road monitoring our officers isn't there, right? So we're having to kind of supplement and, and adapt, if you will. So by adding these two extra lieutenant positions, again, as Council, City Manager Spence said, it will, they do come in at a little bit lower rate. And then the goal is, once we're able to kind of pass the knowledge from our commanders to our lieutenants, when Commander Mack and Commander Upton decide it's time for them to retire, we then will bring in two more lieutenants. So basically, we would remove the commander rank from our structure. So I would oversee four lieutenants. That way, we now have proper oversight over all of our crews. Our sergeants are doing a great job as they are right now, but they are taxed. They can't both supervise and be out in the field at the same time. We have a lot of administrative tasks for them, so this will help alleviate some of that.
Thank you.
Can I ask, how long has that been a discussion?
Say again?
How long has that been a discussion to change the rank structure?
We've been trying to figure out, eh, I got here in December-ish. So the chief and I kind of started discussing it January, February-ish. But we're also trying to also project as we grow, how's it going to look, right? So we feel the structure would be the best way of doing that.
Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, just a quick question. Would you actually be hiring two lieutenants or would you probably be promoting and then hiring to our officers, I'm guessing, right?
That's correct. We'd be promoting from within.
Okay. Excellent. That's, that's what I assumed, but I'm going to make sure. Thank you.
Does everyone feel good about staffing recommendations?
I think the chief has his hand up, Mayor.
Oh, do you, Chief?
Uh, yes. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I apologize. City manager probably told you I'm on bereavement leave due to my father passing away. So thank you for your indulgence on that. But the deputy chief and the city manager are quite right. This is really part of our succession planning as well as better accountability and continuity of command. It is also about developing internal resources for promotability and having that succession plan throughout the organization. And what we saw is that we don't want to have to go outside the organization as we develop as an organization for these higher ranks. We want to develop from within and use that Lacy community-oriented policing strategy that we always have. So as the deputy chief spoke, spoke to, we've been promoting two sergeants to those lieutenant positions and back to more lieutenants, two more corporals, all the way down the structure, then hiring two officers at the end. So this is really a big promotion opportunity, develop from within, create a succession plan, and having a stronger organization as we build and build and move forward.
Great. Thank you, Chief, and our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family.
Thank you.
Just a brief comment. I remember sitting all the way over there on the other side of the room when we did our prioritization and strategic planning exercise and talking about how the needs of Lacy have grown so much and our staffing has not necessarily kept pace. We saw a graphic of it today. And so I wanted to say I'm, I'm really glad to see that we're making some additional strategic investments in the staffing for the city.
Me, too. Thanks. Next slide?
Sorry. We'd like to gauge your support on, you know, the presented single-year rate increases for water, wastewater, and stormwater. Again, it's five point two five for water, nine and a half for wastewater, and four point five percent for stormwater.
We've been talking about those rates for a long time, so it's on par for what we've been talking about.
Okay, and the third and final question is, relates to the one percent council authority to raise property taxes. Again, inflation is running historically high and the one percent is equal to about eighty thousand, five hundred dollars in terms of additional revenues for the city and is less, just over a half a percent, or half a cent per thousand in terms of impact to the individual property owner.
Lenny?
I would just say, this, this is one where you all know that I sometimes struggle with. But I have to say that with inflation at the rate that it's at, to me, that, that makes this a very easy decision. We clearly need, you know, I mean, one percent doesn't come close to keeping up with inflation, so.
Yeah, and with our rate at historic, historic lows, like I predicted.
Okay, for the, the good of the public and maybe a reminder for the council, really quickly, I'd like to cover the scheduled events. As I said, this is the people's budget. We want to make sure that they have their opportunity to be engaged in the public process. Two weeks from today, the city manager will make his unfortunately final budget presentation to the council and to the city. On November third, we'll conduct our revenue hearing. This is really supposed to be focused on property tax. It's an opportunity for the public to express their opinions on any potential tax increase. On November seventeenth, we'll conduct our first public hearing. Also point out that I believe the NLC will be conducting their conference during this time.
They are.
We're going to have to tune in remotely.
Important night, so yeah, I'm very thankful that we have remote virtual options for the council to still take part. Also, on the seventeenth, we'll ask the council to consider the property tax ordinance as well as the utility rate ordinances for 2023. December first, we'll conduct our final general budget public hearing. And then we hope the council will be adopting the 2023 budget on December fifteenth. And that's all I have. Happy to take any more questions or comments from the council.
So I think now's a good time to, for, for me to bring this up. And I've, I've had several conversations with our city manager about what I'm about to say. I think this, as this council knows, I've, I've been very supportive of our community starting a Lacy foundation. And I've been the, one of the primary fundraisers for that. I don't have an official role with the, the foundation other, other than supporting it and, and raising the, the first hundred and something thousand dollars that we've raised. Our, our plan for, the plan, the foundation's plan for that is, number one, receive their 501(c)(3) status, which they've applied for and they're, they're in the process of, of getting. The next step, though, is to actually hire an executive director type person to take the foundation on to fulfill its mission, which is primarily, at this point, a hundred percent into support of the city of Lacy and city Lacy's priorities when it comes to our Parks Department, comes to our Parks and Cultural Department. And there's other several things that a, a foundation in connection with the city can do. For example, there's a lot of things that the city of Lacy is currently doing that a foundation could do, a nonprofit could do instead, like, for example, for example, the, the mayor's gala. You know, that, that's something that's completely internal. It's been about twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, for that. They could easily contract with a, a foundation to put that on, you know, instead. And so what, I know the foundation's hoping to do is, is go out and, and hire someone. We've covered the first, like they said, they've covered the first year, but what they're hoping to do is a limited-term contract for three years. And I think some of the idea was is, could, if we, if the foundation covered the first year, is there a way to connect with the city of Lacy to cover the, you know, the other two years of that contract to make sure it's up and going, much like we did with the Lacy Makerspace, right? We knew, we knew trying to get a Makerspace up from day one was going to be hard. It was going to need some ongoing support from the city for a few years and before it became self-sufficient. This is very similar. Now, those out years are out years, but before they went and, and, you know, started looking for that employee that's guaranteeing that, you know, a three-year, they would be like to have some sort of commitment to the city if that's something the city would like to support. I think that the foundation can work with, with Jen to give a presentation to this council before they do anything, but I just wanted to put it sort of out on the radar is that, I think that ask is coming. It's not maybe a part of necessarily this budget, but in some ways, we need to start thinking about long-term, what that looks like. So I just want to throw that out there and let you know that's, I know, since I've been a part of it, that's what they've been sort of been thinking about.
Awesome.
Does anyone else have anything about budget priorities? Anything that you think we should be including that isn't included? Okay, well, we obviously have a lot more time before the final budget is passed. You know, we're, you saw the budget schedule, and so we have, we'll have opportunities to sort of think on this. And if something comes up along the way, we'll make sure we let staff know, so.
Yeah, we'll.
It will.
Yeah. Well, okay. Well, with that, is there anything else from this council? Councilmember Vasquez?
Not to be in decorous in how quickly I'm bringing this up, but I spoke with the city manager earlier about the process for bringing on a recruitment firm or something similar to seek his replacement. And so I hope that we can get that on the agenda soon just because I'm an employer in my day job. And I know that having as much runway as possible to get the recruitment going, to fill a necessary strategically important position is kind of vital. So the faster we can move on that, the better, I think.
Thank you for that. I've also been in conversations and I sort of have an outline of a plan that I would like to present to the council and our, and I will, that will be coming here shortly. But I, trust me, I've been thinking about this for a while, for a while too. So we will present a plan here shortly about how we're going to move forward. Anything else from council?
With that, we've reached the end of our work session. And without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned.